Good evening, I'm Bill McGrath. I have a reasonably short presentation. I'll read the correct wording for the motion. Is that right?
Um, I was gonna do a motion. You want a motion? Open it, no?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Moderator, I motion that the town amends the action taken under Article 15 of the April 8th, 2014 annual town meeting by appropriating the sum of $9,887,53 to pay costs of constructing a new town hall and for the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the selectman is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 1 of the Massachusetts General Laws or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. No sum shall be borrowed or expended pursuant to this vote, however, unless the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts to repay any borrowing pursuant to this vote from the limitations on property taxes set forth in Chapter 59, Section 21(c) of the Massachusetts General Laws, Proposition 2 and 1/2. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Can I have a second? That's just the same as the other articles of bond. It's all language for the bondsman.
Okay. Go ahead. Make sure I get this right. The conditions of Town Hall. This is from the building inspector. Rotting floor in the main entrance. Many wooden windows have rotted and are screwed shut, causing ventilation problems. The main ramp to the first floor is cracked and crumbling. Room heater in the lower level is non-functional most of the winter. The main service, main furnace has failed six-plus times last year and may need to be replaced. AC functions at half the building, causing those lucky enough to have windows to install window ACs, which is unnecessary, which is an unnecessary expense of energy. Floor tiles are cracking, maybe asbestos. Fryable asbestos covers steam pipes in the basement. Most of the doors within the building are unlockable, causing a security risk. There are damaged ceiling tiles. Water damage from prior leaks caused crumbling drywall. Bathroom fans are broken, creating a health risk. Decades-old tile in the bathrooms. Grotters absorbed the urine and smell cannot be removed. Many broken light fixtures leaving offices dimly lit. The alarm system does not appear to be tested. Smoke alarms are not laid out according to Meet NFPA 72. Emergency exit signs have failed and numerous remodels have caused the signs to be misleading. Emergency lighting has failed throughout. Exposed wiring in boxes throughout the building are throughout the building and that's hazardous. Door hardware has been replaced with incorrect equipment which does not meet code for use in emergencies. Fire partitions have been cut to create service windows and walls, which is not allowed in an unsprinkled building. Lack of adequate heating has caused staff to be forced to use space heaters. Last year, this resulted in a minor fire in an office. Last year, the furnace was blowing smoke combustible bribe products throughout the building. If the heat exchanger may have failed, which can cause carbon monoxide poisoning. Rooms which were not designed as office space have no ventilation and are being used to due to a lack of space and poor layout. Handicap parking space is out of spec, improper slope, no access aisle, improper signage. The route to the main ramp is out of level and too bumpy. The ramp is cracked and bumpy, no handrails. The lower bathroom is entirely inaccessible. The upper bathroom lacks handrails, plumbing protection, fixtures are not accessible, and a new toilet is needed. The stairs are not accessible, an elevator is needed. Door handles are not accessible. Door arrangement is not accessible. Sinage is not accessible. Door thresholds are not accessible. Town Hall is a mess. It needs to be replaced. Wait for it. That's it. It's all you get. Thanks for the claps. This is what we got now. This is what we proposed to have. This is where it'll be. The overlay is over the top of the present town hall. This is from Google Maps with a little free hand. You can see the Oak Bluffs Library parking lot. This is the footprint of the new building. It's about 6,740 square feet footprint. We have a basement. It's a partial basement. It's about 4,800, 2,800 square feet. This is the lower level, 6,800 square feet. You can see at the right is permitting, Concom, Board of Health, and building. One of the nice things about this plan, which we put together with a building committee that was formed in December, and we use the architects K&amp;K who are sitting in the audience if anyone has questions for them, is the very first thing we did was talk to all the staff in Town Hall and said, "What do you need? What do you like? How can we accommodate you? What differences can we make to the previous plan in 2014 that will make Town Hall work better?" All their input was taken. This design came out of it, and then the building committee started to work on some other things like the details of the outside. You'll notice that the town clerk is in the lower left. Let me see if I can make this little dot work. That's the town clerk's office. It's in almost exactly the same space as it is today. It's moved a little bit to the west towards Pacific. It's larger. It has a larger vault area. It's got stairway access to the main floor. Stairway access here. This little box here is an elevator that goes to all the floors. It's got planning and CCC spaces. It's got IT spaces. It's got bathrooms on every level. It's a lot of buttons up here for me to handle. This is the main level. Same square footage, approximately 6,800 square feet. This space here is the main meeting room. It's larger than the library meeting room. It'll hold about 60 people. It will be designed acoustically so that my friends and myself, as I get a little bit older, will be able to hear, unlike you can do in a library meeting room. Will be acoustics installed, and it will be checked out, I promise, by Carrie Alley before any plans are approved. Again, the stairway, elevator, tax office, assessors, treasurer, accounting here, toilets again. There's a little kitchenette here. This is the exit to Pacific. And one of the nice things about that exit is it's, one, it's the main level. It's ADA accessible, of course. There's parking right there that you can pull up within about five feet of the shelter of the overhang, so that even if it's raining, if you're quick, like I'm not, you'll be able to jump from the car or under the shelter and not even get wet. If you're a little bit slower, you had time to put up your umbrella, get under the shelter and put it down all within about six seconds. This is the upper level. It's about two-thirds of the size of the lower levels because of the overhangs and pop-ups. Here's the town administrator's office, the board of selectmen, staff. There's some meeting rooms. There's a meeting room here. There's a more comfortable waiting area than is in the present town hall. If any of you ever go into with someone and they say, "Well, go sit on the bench," it's not very comfortable. It's not very private. It's not a good place to wait. It's not very professional. This'll be much better. There's a kitchenette on each floor, so that if people go to meetings, committees, different groups in Town Hall go to meet, they can make coffee, they can take something out of the refrigerator, they can wash their hands, just like the little kitchenette that's in the back of the library meeting room. There's room reserved for future use. That covers the building. From this lobby, and it's still under development, I believe, from the lobby, you'll be able to look down into the main meeting room, so there'll be extra space for observers. If you're standing on School Street, this is what the building will look at, will look like. And what we're gonna do very quickly is we're gonna walk around to the left, down School Street, into the parking lot. I know, we're walking really fast. This is the lower-level entrance that is out of the parking area. There's an entrance now into the conference room in Old Town Hall. This is the entrance. This would go into the building department, Concom, Board of Health. There's a separate entrance right there that goes into the town clerk. Continuing to walk, this is looking at it. You're facing north. This roof here is solar-ready, so that when the building is built, we can go out for a, I'm not sure what it's called, a grant, some solar program that will layer that with solar panels, that will essentially pay for not only this building, but the library next This is the Pacific Ave entrance. It has, this first door is out of the little staff kitchen where the Town Hall employees can make their lunch, come out perhaps on a sunny day like today, sit outside, and that's the entrance to the main level. If we approve it, both tonight and at the ballot, it's planned to open in 2019 in April. Now the important stuff. What will it cost? Just to offer some perspective, if any of you go up on East Chop Drive... It's an attractive building, and in fact, I was up there the other day biking, and one of my friends came by and he said, "Bill, is that the new Town Hall?" It's not quite large enough, but you'll notice that the cost, oops, sorry, didn't mean to do that. The cost is pretty comparable for about half the size. And I'm thinking that we might be built sooner. What's changed in three years? If you remember, in April 2014, a town meeting, we approved that amount. It was $6,830,000. It's a little bit bigger, has the same number of levels, but we've added a basement for more storage. It didn't have a very appealing look. One of the biggest complaints was, "It doesn't look like Oak Bluffs." The staff wasn't very happy with the design. It passed the town meeting and failed at the ballot. We're hoping to change that. The staff was engaged early and is very happy with the design. It's got a much better design. There was much more community involvement. There were 14 people on the building committee from every different walk of life you can imagine, and most participated very energetically. It fits better in the capital plan. One big change that is gonna continue, whether we approve this tonight, or approve it next year, or approve it the year after that, is building costs are gonna continue to increase. What's the plan? I'm the capital program chairman and have been for a lot of years now. We try to keep the debt service stable so that you don't have large swings in your tax bills. We've got a stable bond rating of AA+. Next year, I'm thinking it's gonna be AAA. Borrowing rates are still low, but as anybody who reads any newspaper or watches any news, they're starting to creep up. The Fed has been thinking about and has raised rates a little bit. With bond anticipation notes, we can time the impact of the debt. Can we afford it? The short answer is yes. What's the impact on your taxes? Well, if you got my email today, you're about to learn. What are the impacts of delay and what's the next decision? This is the debt service for the town. This gold color here, or yellow, is existing debt. We already owe that. And you can see that it comes down pretty quickly, and I'll show you why in a minute. What's coming off that we're paying for now? The blue is Town Hall. The green is future wastewater. And if you look at the top, right here, that's 2017, that's what we're paying. It goes down, even with Town Hall, even with wastewater, and it never gets back to that These are the things that are coming off our long-term debt, that we paid for over the years, we approved several years ago. Some you'll remember, some you may not. I don't remember all of them. This is the year they're coming off the debt service. Any questions on it? Everybody remember those? This is how the debt is reacting to those things coming off. And in this first column, this is the fiscal year. In this column here, this is how much the debt is reduced with just existing debt. And it comes down pretty quickly, almost a million dollars in 2022. This column over here is also the debt declining, but this is with a new Town Hall, new wastewater, anything else that we've talked about adding to the plan so far. And it comes down pretty quickly, all the way until 2024, when for one year, there's a bump. What does that do to your taxes? These are the capital improvements. These are the dollar amounts that we're talking about. That's existing, right there. These are Town Hall costs. There's three years of bond anticipation notes, and that's essentially for timing. Then comes wastewater with bond anticipation notes for a couple of years. This is Farm Pond, that we're already paying for. This is the OB/School that's coming. This planned debt is... Existing debt plus the additions. This is the tax rate for capital debt that you're gonna be paying. And this is per thousand. And you notice it starts at 89 cents, and it goes down relatively quickly until this is 2022, I believe. 2025. 2025, wow, that's even better. Even then, which is that big bump where it was 793,000 extra, it only bumps up to less than it is now. So can we afford it? I say yes. This is the tax rate, again, from the chart before. This is the tax on a average house in Oak Bluffs, which is about $600,000. This is per year. This 89 cents right there, that 534, that's before Town Hall. Goes down, it goes down to 432. Even when it bumps up in 2025, it's at only 498 bucks. That's for a $600,000 house. This is the impact on taxes. If we can bond it for 20 years at 3%, which at the moment, I think we can, it's gonna cost 2780 for every $100,000 of property value in 2022, the first year paying the principal and interest. And then it decreases every year thereafter. We pay the same principal each year, but of course, the interest goes down, just as if you were buying a car. You pay for it for 60 months or 72 months, or, I don't know, I don't do that. That's equivalent to two Martha's Vineyard excursion fares in 2017 for the average homeowner. We live on an island. Everybody buys tickets like this, I hope, goes off-island a couple of times a year. So go a couple times more and have a nice new Town Hall. Is that pretty self-explanatory? This is today, oops, sorry, did it wrong. This is today. That's a $600,000 house. That's what you pay for capital debt service. That doesn't include the Town Hall. In 2022, four years from now, same $600,000 property is gonna pay that. That does include Town Hall. It's almost like we're making money. What's the impact of delay? Each six months adds about 4% to the overall project cost, which for each $100,000 adds about a dollar for the life of the loan. Not significant, no, six months. If you look at the price we were about to pay in 2014 compared to the price that we're gonna pay in 2017, you can see that in fact, that 4% may even be a small or slight underestimation. Taxes, I mean, not taxes, interest rates are a much more significant problem, and we've enjoyed low interest rates for a long time now. And we may enjoy them for the next five years, but I wouldn't suggest you hold your breath for it. Each 1% rise in interest rates adds about $5 for 100,000 for the life of the loan. So interest rates are important, and they're starting to creep up. If this is approved tonight by two-thirds, and it also passes at the ballot on Thursday, this is what happens next. We'll complete the design, have a site plan reviewed by the planning board. We'll produce construction documents. We'll go out to bid, and if we get a satisfactory bid, we'll relocate the town offices probably behind the Catholic parish house in trailers. We'll start demolition, and we'll move into a new Town Hall in April of 2019. Thanks. I'm willing to answer any question. Any questions?
Thank you for that fine presentation.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the town employees who go to work in a horrible building every day. Quite frankly, I don't think I could do it. I couldn't go and work in there. It's not sound environmentally. There are things going on in that building that really aren't good for people, so I hope we all go through this, I really do. I'm also interested in energy, and I know you've planned well for the possibility of a future solar active system, but we have to deal with today and tomorrow and the days after that. So the question I really have is about the orientation of the building, solar aspect, as we call it, getting natural light in the building. There are certain things that can be done in buildings for lighting, for instance. They are heat sensitive, so when employees leave a room, the workspace, the workstation, the lights go off. That's how we save a lot of, a lot of money. So I'm interested in that, and I'm also interested in the exterior material of the building. I was on the school building committee years ago with Richard Tool and Richie Combra, and the building is in tile, is a tile form, and I think we've had pretty good success with that. I think there's a 50-year life on that exterior. And if this is wood shingle, we're gonna be banging nails again, so...
It's not wood shingles. It's made to look like wood shingles so that it fits in the neighborhood, but it's supposed to be maintenance-free. Is that correct? And Richard Tool is also on this, and he's been a super help.
He knows more about this than I do, anyway.
He knows more about it than anybody I know, in fact.
So could you have someone address the energy efficiencies? What is the heating plant going to be? Because we're not on a solar active system now.
It will be all-electric.
Uh-huh. Heat pump system? Is there someone here on the team that can describe the system briefly for me?
The architects are here, if people are willing to hear from them.
Briefly, in a minute or two, that'd be great.
They only speak briefly.
But they spend our money, so we need to know.
This is John Keenan.
Good evening. The building is in the same orientation as the current Town Hall, with the long side parallel to School Street. It's facing due south, so it's perfect for the solar orientation. The building code requires now that occupancy sensors are in every building and every room, so that's a given. If you were in the room, you leave, the lights go out. The all-electric system is what is called a variable flow. I never get it right, but basically, it's, each individual room is controlled by its own thermostat. You can have nobody in the room. It could be 50 degrees. The room next door could be occupied and be 65 degrees. It takes off, it takes away the interference of the north side facing, you know, cold, cold side, the south side gaining too much heat, but it's the best system, most efficient system on the market right now. We've used it in the West history police station, which is very economical. What were some of the other questions? Materials, it's an asphalt shingle roof. There are some standing seam metal roofs. The windows are all aluminum clad. The trim is all synthetic PVC or another material. There's a cast stone base around the building to protect that bottom that usually gets rotted more quickly. The building would be super insulated, probably twice or three times required by the state Your new fire station, because the building was so efficient with lighting, energy use and everything else, the town received a $68,000 check from the Cape Light Compact as a refund because of the energy efficiency of the building. That added, this project wound up with almost $100,000 left in the budget, including that 60-some thousand-dollar grant from the Cape Light Compact. It's a very super-efficient and low-energy use, low maintenance on the outside, virtually no maintenance.
That's all you get, John. Thank you.
Why are we doing this solar panel right now?
It's a separate program, and the state will help fund it, but you need a platform to put it on. So first, we build a building solar-ready, and then we go to the state program and get solar panels to put on it.
Bill, if this project were not approved and is delayed again, and we had to bring the current Town Hall up to health and safety standards, what would it cost?
Essentially, it costs more to renovate what we have... Essentially, it costs more to renovate what we have, and we still will have an old building that's too small than it does to build new. Manny?
Yeah, Bill. Do you have permission to put the trailers, where you're proposing to put the trailers, and what, is that cost included in this cost or not?
It is included in the cost, and it will be, we're still not done with the planning, but they will be placed on town property, which is on the other side of the, but we're also looking for a site, and I'm going to go talk to my friend up on East Chop and see if he'll... Yes.
Question. Yes, I believe the town hall is deplorable, and then my, the second question was already answered, it can't be fixed with the amount of money, for less than the amount of money we want to put in, but I happen to live off of School Street, and I'm thinking of the wear and tear on the street, I'm thinking of where the trailers are going to be parked, I'm thinking of a complete disruption of my neighborhood. So has any provision been made for the updating of School Street itself?
Yes. I'll give you a better answer, should I have a picture? School Street is up where it says footprint, and what we've done is we take essentially the curb out from the corner of Pacific and School, down to the end of the driveway going into the library. And there will be end-in-parking off of School Street here, that will not impede the traffic like it does now. This is the entrance that will come off of Pacific, and there'll be handicap parking and regular parking here to go right into that entrance there. The trailers, if we get trailers, if that's how we do it, and I suspect we will, will go on the far side of the parish house, the old school, the one we never should have given away, though we did. But they will go on town property, which is essentially in the area where there is now extra parking, they will come out probably onto Pacific, they may go in off of School Street, where there's already traffic going in. I don't believe there's going to be, other than the construction as we build a new town hall, any additional traffic that will impact School Street, and in fact, at the end, when these changes are made, I think School Street will be much more accessible. We did not, because I don't think it belongs in the project, go into any further changes to School Street as you go down further towards Deuce County Ave, although I suspect that that would be a good thing to look at in the future. But that's beyond the scope of the town hall building project. Thank you for that question. Yes?
I was wondering, because unfortunately, the town hall was originally in where the police station is now, and it moved to this location. During this whole project, we have never thought about taking the police station and incorporating it into this project, so therefore, we would have a wonderful asset that we could sell and fund this project. Why haven't we not thought about it?
I would tell you that we have thought about it. We did not think about it in this particular project, this particular juncture, but it was proposed back in twenty, oh, two thousand and three, I think, and talking about a campus plan that would move the police station up. Part of the issue, and this is really beyond this discussion, part of the issue is, we have lots of coming needs, and that police station is certainly one of them. I think most people would like it out of downtown and use that wonderful asset, but I know several people, selectmen included, from several different generations of selectmen, have looked at, what can we do to that property? And there's been lots of studies, and I agree, it's a wonderful property, and wouldn't it be great to make money with it, and do something beyond that, using that money? That's not part of this project, but it certainly is something that lots of people have thought about and talked about. It might well be down the pike. We're waiting on a master plan out of the planning board, there's lots of other issues. We've got a senior center that will eventually work, we've got other, other needs that need to be considered, but town hall by the selectmen, by the planning board, by lots of other people bubble to the top, and it's the number-one issue for the, in the strategic plan for the selectmen, and that's why we're doing it. And this particular space is not sufficient to hold more than two buildings if we're going to have any parking.
Bill?
Yes?
If I could just say, you mentioned about traffic on School Street. If you were to move the police station up there, you talk about police cars buzzing in and out up in that area, Pacific Ave by the library or School Street, that's a lot, that's a lot for that area.
Yeah, it's well beyond the scope of what I was hired to do. Any other questions?
Yeah, Bill? I bring this up every time, E.L. Edwards, every time I talk to you about the new town hall, I bring it up, and I'll bring it up again. Has any thought or any measures going to go into providing maintenance for this building? You know, there's no point in building a brand-new building unless you maintain it. And I look at what's happened to the library, and they've tried to stay on top of it, but you've got carpet that should have been replaced five years ago, and just little things where regular maintenance, changing filter. Is any plan from our selectmen to do something about regular maintenance for town property?
Thanks, E.L. And yes, that's the thirty-seventh time you've asked me that question, and I'm going to give you the same answer. I fully agree with you, and yes, I believe it is in the planning stages to not only have somebody do the maintenance, but also have a building maintenance guy over all the buildings in the town, someone who goes around and does things. That's not in this plan. I'm hoping that after we build it, we'll have a year before, we need to make sure that's in the plan, but yes, we have considered it. Thank you for that question.
Come on up to the microphone, please.
Just, how many parking are you thinking you'll have?
How many additional parking?
Yeah, how many do you have now? How many additional?
Thank you. Everybody hear the answer? Twenty-two additional. Thank you.